Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting. It is Tuesday, December 12th. We are here at the Admin Building, and let's all rise for these pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to begin tonight by hearing from Kelly Plumb, who has quite a bit to share with us this evening.
The high school board meeting tonight. We are thankful to have tonight with us some of our choir members and our director, Mrs. Lucy Kokos. With us, we have Evan McCarty. You can wait so they can see who you are. We have Kat Green Waterman, Emily Bishop, Becca Morris.
She's hiding.
She's in the back. Paula O'Mara, Alex Harmon, and don't remind me, Joshua. Joshua Welch. My goal is to learn everyone's name by Christmas break. About eighty percent there. Lucy is directing her students tonight to sing "Still, Still, Still" as arranged by Norman Love.
Wow. That's great. Beautiful. Thank you.
I guess out of the room.
Yes.
Mr. Harris play a song first?
If I start playing, Chris, go ahead and get ready for the chairman.
Great job. Thank you. I'm so enjoying it.
Here, I'll go for pedal. Perfect. I will collapse this.
All righty, thank you. Ms. Plumb, would you like to come up? We have a special guest with us, the 2024 recipient of the Lilly Scholarship, Kaylee Hager. So Ms. Plumb, I would turn it over to you to recognize Kaylee and her parents and share a little bit about.
Seeing that smile, she lights up a room. So, you know, I haven't been at the high school very long, but she was one of the friendliest people right away. I, you know, I talked to her friends, I talked to some teachers that know her, and they all said the same thing. She can light up a room. She just brings this joy about her. You may see her cheering down on the Spartan floor, but she's always a cheerleader to her friends and to people in the building. So we are so proud of you. She's, you know, she has big dreams. She butlers an option. She's keeping her mind open right now, but definitely wants to study biology. And then she has some plans for grad school afterwards. So we are proud of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you have a speech prepared? No, would you like to introduce the important people next to you?
Yes, this is my dad, Kyle Hager, and this is my mom, Elizabeth Hager.
Well, congratulations. You are a wonderful representative of Fayette County and Fayette County School Corporation.
Thank you so much.
So thank you and congratulations. You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting. You can sneak out.
Thank you for all the opportunities that you provide. Are you, we appreciate it very much. Thank you so much.
Congrats. Thank you, Kaylee. Mike, would you come up? Many of you know my kind of him, and one of his coaches is in the, pardon us. Mike grew up here. The Heinemann family was such a tremendous part of this community. And Mike had contacted us a while back, and their family wants to do something in memory of his mother, Margie Heinemann, who was a longtime educator, and I'm not gonna steal her thunder, but I appreciate you coming up and sharing what you're doing, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you having me here this evening. I was telling him when I came in here, I retired and I remember the board meeting. So I'm gonna talk for about five or 10 minutes, and what I want to do is I want to talk a little bit about mom, then I want to talk about what we want to do for mom, and then I want to give a quick, Scott asked me to talk a little bit about what my family's currently doing. So bear with me. I normally don't use notes. I speak from the heart, but when my mom passed away, a piece of my heart broke. So it's easier for me to go ahead and read this tonight, so bear with me. Mom's impact on Fayette County School Corporation was truly amazing. She began her teaching career at Connersville at Maplewood Elementary School. She taught PE and special education while also coaching varsity sports. Now, mind you, she had to take care of a set of twins, a daughter that was two years older than us, and most importantly, my father, George, who was a businessman at Ford. So we're a pretty busy family. She, along with the late Hayden McQueen, worked with the county schools to bring PE to the schools in the county. Mom traveled everywhere. She traveled to Waterloo, Orange, Fayette Central, Bentonville, just to name a few. After she got done doing that, she went ahead and moved on into the high school and taught physical education at the high school, along with the varsity sports coaching. I actually had mom as a senior in physical education class, and she didn't treat me any differently than anyone else. I couldn't call her mom, I had to call her Coach H. But she was a joy to have. She continued to coach three main sports at Connersville. She taught swimming, golf, and tennis. She was very successful. She won a lot, she lost some. Most of us parents think about nothing but winning and losing, but what I learned from mom was that wins and losses shouldn't measure someone's success. Teaching life lessons to your students was paramount to mom. Her philosophy was really, really simple. Hard work, positive attitude, and being the best you can be for all her students was her focus. Her enthusiasm radiated through staff members, but most importantly, her students. In other words, her impact was second to none. She loved CHS. She continued to support CHS athletics after Leslie, Chris, and I graduated from CHS in 81 and 83. She continued her support for athletics long after her retirement. I'm sure no one in here knows that mom, in some cases, was a trailblazer for girls' sports here at Connersville. There was a lady that started the Girls Athletic Association from Terre Haute in 1930. Her name was Emma Flack, and what she did was she built a manual, and she encouraged physical educators to take that manual and take it into the school systems that they were at. Mom jumped at that idea. She jumped at that idea because she felt like she wanted to dedicate herself to the cause for girls in Connersville. Mom thought young women should have the equal opportunity to participate, and she was right. Eventually, IHSA passed the girls' varsity sports opportunities. Her lasting impact years later was so many, as former students would come up to me and say, "I had your mom in PE." She was tough, but she was fair. She taught me so many life lessons. A quick couple of examples of my mom. I came back in January of last year for the fortieth reunion of the state championship in 1983 that I was lucky enough to be a part of. And as I walked around the bowl that night, many, many people came up to say hello to me. It was flattering. And I thought they would say, geez, I remember the day when you guys won that state championship. What an exciting time. But that really didn't happen. They came up to me and they said, "I'm sorry about your mom's passing." They talked about how they had her in physical education class. Talked, one guy said, "She taught me how to play golf in PE." Another person said, "She taught me how to swim." And even a few said, "Mike, she was simply the best." Another person that reached out to my sister on Facebook about two and a half months ago was a student of mom had, Joey Silverman, which was over about 43 years ago. And he sent a Facebook message to my sister, reiterating the lessons that he learned from mom and still applies them today. And finally, an example was about two months ago, I got into a conversation with Scott, and we started talking about different things, and the names sounded familiar, and he reminded me, "Hey, my dad taught and coached you and Chris for flag football in third and fourth grade." And we laughed, and then he said, you know, and he said, "I had your mother, she taught me how to swim." In fact, Mike, it saved my life. In closing, relationships were most important to mom. Retiring two years ago, I was a former athlete, coach, and AD. I tried to follow mom's philosophy. Good educators are tough to find. She believed great teachers had a few important qualities. The love for teaching, having fun with their students, which equals them having an opportunity to learn. There are so many great educators here, but they're difficult to find. I don't know many of you in here this evening, a couple of you, and I don't know what you do for a living, but I know one person in here, and I hate to embarrass him, but I'm going to anyways. Mark Beard. Mom believed that Mark Beard, in her eyes, exemplified what a great educator was. He taught Chris and I in history classes, juniors. You remember that, don't you, Emmy?
Yeah.
And he also took us to Washington DC with Harry the Hat Smith. And we were in Washington DC, and we spent a week, and I'll never forget my mom and dad making sure that Mark understood to take care of us, and he did. But you know what? He took care of all his students. That is what made him a great educator. Mom believed that that's what it was all about. Fifty years have gone by, and the relationship that my twin brother, Chris, and I have with Mark Beard is still as strong as ever. I thought about it, and I realized with mom, 45 years plus, and there are still folks that tell me what mom meant to them. I asked mom a couple of years before I retired, "How would I know if I made an impact with my students?" And she simply said, "You won't know the impact immediately. It's gonna take 15 or 20 years, maybe longer, when they maybe get married, they have kids, and if they are a positive influence in the community. If you can check any of those boxes, son, then you've made a positive impact on your students." As I look back at mom's legacy and constantly hear from many, I truly, truly believe mom has checked many, if not at all, of those boxes. When mom passed away, dad wanted to do something special for mom because she loved CHS, and she put her heart and soul into this school. So dad wanted to do some kind of an endowment to honor mom. The endowment we would like to do is reads as follows. The family of Margie Heinemann, who was an enthusiastic physical education teacher and varsity coach for 20-plus years in the Fayette County School Corporation, has established a scholarship in her name. Coach H fostered a philosophy of hard work, positive attitude, and being the best you can be. Her dedication clearly made a positive impact on all the students at Connersville High School. She loved supporting all CHS athletics well after her retirement. The common application will be used. The requirements for the scholarship, number one, a senior female athlete who participated in a varsity sport. Two, an applicant must have applied and been accepted to Ball State University. Three, a 250-word essay verifying how an applicant exemplifies mom's philosophy. Student must be in good academic standing to continue the scholarship. And finally, the recipient will be selected by the CHS athletic director and coaching staff. We are, have a check for $12,000 that will take care of three students at $1,000 a year for four, four years, and hopefully that will help them continue their education process and make a impact, not only in the community, possibly back here in Connersville, but wherever they go. The last thing I want to say, Scott asked me if I would just briefly talk about what's happening with my family currently. And my father lives in Naples, Florida, which is where mom and he were living, and would come back a couple of months in the summer at the lake house that we have outside of Greensburg. When mom passed away, dad's remained in Naples. People ask me all the time, "How's he doing?" He's doing okay. He's day-to-day. We've all been through it, when you lose a loved one. Sixty-one years, doesn't have his partner. He did everything for her, never worried about himself, so it's difficult, but he's hanging in there. My sister Leslie, she's retired. She has four girls. Her and her husband Todd live in Naples for six months, and they travel around for six months, so she's doing great. My twin brother Christopher, he lives in Plymouth, Michigan. He has four kids. His youngest, Hallie Jo, is a freshman at Detroit Country Day, pretty high-powered private school. She went to the state tournament as a golfer as a freshman, so she's pretty talented in that. But he's doing very, very well. He's been a very, very successful businessman. Myself, I have two girls, 24 and 28. They both play Division One college basketball, 4.0 students, which is what I talk about. I don't talk about the athletic part of it. I talk about what they did with their scholarship. My youngest one is in charge of the OR for labor and delivery in Austin, Texas, and my oldest daughter is working at the university where she played. She's in charge of all of the athletic teams, which I think is 18 to 20 of them at the university, and she's in charge of all the traveling, all the coaches, recruiting. She does it all, so she's very, very busy, and she's doing very, very well. I'm very proud of my two girls. Myself, I'm retired. I do nothing. Which I'm not very good at. I'm trying to get my boat to start every day, which I haven't been very successful. Maybe I need a job because it's costing me a lot of money to take care of my boat, but I've enjoyed being back. It's a little chilly, so I'm getting ready to head back to Naples to see dad, to spend some quality time with him. But I want to leave you with this. Two weeks ago, I came into Connersville because I drink coffee every morning with retired guys that are a little bit older than I am, and one of the gentleman's grandson played for Shelbyville. So he asked me if I would go into Connersville to the basketball game. I said, "I'd love to." And so we went, and we went down Third Street Hill, and I wanted to take him down Central Avenue so he could see the city of Connersville, the meat of the city. And as we turned left and we started down Central, all of a sudden, there was barricades. And I'm like, "What in the world?" And I see all these beautiful lights, and I knew right away it was a Christmas festive environment, and it was impressive. And there were people everywhere, and we had to turn around, and I think we went up Western maybe or Grand, I don't remember, it didn't matter. And I thought to myself, man, that's the Connersville I remember growing up. That's what I remember about Connersville. And so when I went on and played college basketball, and I would tell people where I was from, people knew about Connersville. Not just the basketball part of it, but they knew about Connersville, Indiana. And I thought to myself, how cool is it? I've heard it, I've seen it now, that people in Connersville, the community leaders, the board, y'all, are trying to make a difference to bring Connersville back to where maybe it once was. And it's gonna be a lot of hard work. Nothing in life worth anything is easy. And so there is a lot of hard work, but I just want to say that as an outsider who has not been in Connersville for over 30 years, to come back and to see that, it was extremely impressive. And so congratulations to the people of Connersville for trying to make a difference, because someone like myself sees that. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll answer any questions if anybody has them. If not, I'm out the door. Let you continue on with your business, but I really do appreciate it. It's an honor to be able to be here tonight and to speak. Remember, dad was president of board for 13 years, so when he said, "You're going to the board meeting tonight," Michael, I remember those days. But again, thank you so much. I really, really do appreciate it.
I wanted to share with you that when my oldest, who is almost 40, was swimming when she was seven or eight with cast, your mom and Buddy Collins had one lane during cast practice, and they were so inspirational, because even though they, they had their workout, you know, they were doing, they had it written on a board, you know, they were doing their own thing. I can't tell you how many kids, like wide-eyed, "What are these people doing?" Because they were swimming masters, swimming. And she won all kinds of awards for masters, I recall, and they nurtured those kids well beyond their years of, and I, you know, Buddy Collins was actually a neighbor of mine, but I wouldn't have known him otherwise, but her, you know, far beyond her teaching and her coaching, she was still inspiring those kids in the early 90s, just by her example of being in that pool and pushing through and doing those things that kids need to do to be successful.
She, she loved to swim. I, we were swimmers. We grew up as swimmers. That was probably, and I think Mark knows this, we were pretty doggone good swimmers. I can talk about it now. I think I still have the fly record at age eight, 25-yard butterfly. But we were swimmers, and we realized in a real hurry that in Connersville, swimming may have been important, but basketball was a little bit more important. So maybe you guys need to move a little bit in a different direction, but we had an opportunity to do a lot of sports, which I think was, was vital. And so mom really believed it. I gotta say one thing else. I'm sorry, I don't mean to take so much time, but I just recognized, that's Officer Hunt. That's a quality guy right there. That's a quality guy right there. I bleed the blue. But no, it, thank you very much for those kind words, but yeah, she loved swimming with Buddy, and boy, they, she, she went all over the world. I mean, they went to Australia, they, they did a lot. She really, really did enjoy it.
Something, something Mike shared too, I didn't know, she was a cheerleader at Ball State.
She was a cheerleader at Ball State, which was one of the things that, you know, as a, and I don't, schools do everything differently, but I believe cheerleaders are part of a varsity sport. Now, I don't know if they have that here at Connersville or not, but I just read, and I was gonna show you, I took a picture of it. I think there's like eight Connersville cheerleaders that went to Hawaii to participate, participate in some kind of cheerleading thing. Yeah, that's impressive. And so, you know, if there's a cheerleader, mom was a Ball State cheerleader, yes, for four years. Yeah, absolutely.
Our Lilly Scholarship recipient has been a cheerleader since seventh grade that I know of, and has led up the cheer squad along with her cousins, so they've been really involved with that. It's so nice to hear that cheerleaders are a real sport and really important.
Absolutely. Matter of fact, I, I think I got in trouble because one of the things I did when I heard about the fortieth reunion for our state championship, I said, "Well, you're gonna invite the cheerleaders, aren't you?" "No, no, no, we didn't do that for the '72 team. We're gonna do it, and we're gonna not change things for the '83 team." And I thought, you know, they were a part of, everybody was a part of that back in '83. It was the band, it was the fans, it was, and having the opportunity to play all the basketball I did all over the country, and people asking me, I talked about Connersville. I talked about, you play for the city, you play for your family, and I was a distant, playing for myself was a distant third, fourth, or fifth down the line. And so that's what, and I bet you if you asked Matt Howard, he would say the same thing. If you asked April McDavitt, she would say the same thing. Grant Smith would say, I mean, we all felt that Connersville spirit when we played, and that's what made this place, and still, very special.
The Chamber of Commerce used part of the '84, the '83, '84 game as part of their pitch to come to Connersville, and I can tell you what the last two minutes, we moved to Connersville in '85, and that was the pitch to come to Connersville. That was part of the pitch. They showed the last two minutes of that game where Troy Lewis didn't do something well, and we did something well, and we won. And as a basketball fan, this is home, we're moving here, that was kind of the tipping point. Then when you walk in the Spartan Bowl, and it's like the no-brainer. So, and I met your mom, and I talked with you a while, she was fabulous.
Well, you know, it's funny, because when I, when I look at Mark Beard, you know, he was, again, not only a teacher, but he was a coach, and he was on a basketball staff, and he took care of me because I was beat up all the time. And the funny story a lot of people don't know is that when we played that semi-state game in the morning, I had blood blisters as big as half dollars on my feet, and I went in and I told Emmy, I said, "My feet are killing me." And I took my shoes off, and I got blood all over my socks, and my feet are just raw. And the butler trainer came in and said, "He can't play tonight." What'd you say, Mark?
You try and stop him.
But he was, he was great. I mean, Mark took care of us, and, and I don't say it loosely, I think most people around here know how great Mark was as an educator, and he cared so much about the kids. He didn't play favorites. He was, he, he, I could tell a story. I don't want to, but I could tell a story. Again, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. You guys, yes, go ahead.
Yes, I want to say something, Mike. Going to school and your time and everything when you were here and all that, when I think of the Heinemann family, I just think of a good, solid, wholesome family that there's not that many anymore. I mean, that's what I look at your family, you know, through the community, through church and all that kind of thing. I just think of, you know, so it's hard to find a family like yours nowadays.
Well, I appreciate it. You know, I say all the time that parents are so important, and we just have so many single homes today, and the foundation that, that parents can build, you know, they expect teachers to do everything. Come on, it's gotta, it's gotta start in a home. And we were fortunate that, I feel like we had a great set of parents that made sure we were grounded, didn't think we were better than other people. You know, we did everything everybody else did, and I think that's important. I really do. And the interesting thing is, is, you know, the Heinemann family has been in existence literally since Connersville started. I was starting to read some stuff about my great aunt, Elizabeth Heinemann, that was kind of... the historian of Connersville. And I mean, the Heinemans go back when John Connor came to Connersville. And so there's a long legacy of Heinemans here. And while we aren't as involved in Connersville as we once were, there's still a place in my heart, which is why Dad wanted to do something in memory of Mom, because Connersville has been very important in our lives. So, you know, I appreciate you saying that. I still have the same friends I had when I was growing up. I haven't changed. You know, a lot of times, success will change people, money will change people. I've seen it. But we haven't changed at all. And that's why I wanted to come here tonight. When Scott asked me to come, I'm like, "Absolutely, I would love to get in front of people and talk." Be difficult talking about Mom, she was my best friend. She never judged me. All the trouble I got in, she never judged me. She just said, "How can we fix... What's the solution to the problem?" And if more parents found solutions to situations, we'd be a hell of a lot better off. And all I want to say is, "Go Spartans." Thank you so much.
Mark, would you come up? Come on. I would like you to present the check to Mark, because I know he had such a huge impact on you on behalf of Kellie Schools, if you want to get a picture of that.
You might need those glasses someday.
Yeah, you might need them.
He's got about five pairs.
Cindy's going to take your picture here, but I think it's fitting to get that Mark out of your life too, to present that to the, on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike.
Just give that to Scott.
Thank you so much for inviting me. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
I'm sorry. How are you doing, buddy? You look great. You're not as big as you once were, though. Don't have that uniform on. I don't see those pipes like you do. You should wear the hell out of those.
Are we done with all of that?
No, Kellie's next.
Kellie's got a presentation.
Follow that, Kellie. That's a hard act to follow.
I should have, I'm so sorry. Be careful, Mike.
This is just a little snapshot. A little snapshot of what the high school's doing with EES, which is the district initiative for our instructional priorities model. So I think I said to pass some things around. We'll reference those in a little bit, but I wanted you to have those.
We're just supposed to work out.
Yep, bits for you to keep.
Oh, no, Scott's whole work.
Oh, Scott's, I need ones. Scott's holding out.
Okay. It's like, okay, we've lost.
You're fine. This is just a reference for you to keep once we get to this slide. It's pretty interesting, and I won't spend a lot of time talking about it.
We're almost ready, Kellie.
My favorite one, you know.
Does Ryan have one?
Yes.
All right. IPM, the big picture. So the instructional priorities model, this is just the big picture that we're focusing on as a district. So we have our literacy, our math and reasoning, and our employability skills. And then in between, the very middle, is what we're working on as a district. So this all ties together. It's a two-to-three-to-even-four-year process. This is the big picture. Today, I'm just going to focus on where we started at CHS and where we're going. What is... Oh, right click, left click. There you go. Nope. That's my corner.
Should be left.
Use the ball. Try to roll it.
There.
Oh, go the other way, sorry.
Sorry. Have to be smarter than the mouse. Okay. What is IPM? IPM is the Instructional Priorities Model. All of these areas are to get us consistent within the building and the practices that we're doing. So immediate application is just providing teachers the strategies and knowledge that are part of their existing instructional practices. So it's takeaways that they can use to enhance what they're already doing in the classroom. Common language, the common instructional language and expectations across the board. So all of our algebra teachers using the same language, all of our English teachers using the same language. The core instruction, decreasing the variability within the quality of core instruction throughout the building. So if I have Mr. Myers for algebra and Ms. Crutchfield, are we doing the same things? Are we consistent with kids? Professional learning, focusing and creating that intentionality within our professional development. And then feedback, establishing the foundation for nonevaluated formative walkthroughs. So giving those teachers that immediate feedback that's not evaluative, making sure that the areas we're focusing on are consistent across the board. So that's the big picture of what IPM. It's basically having our instructional priorities for our departments be consistent. So everyone in the English department knows what the priorities are for the English department. Back in October, when we did staff PD, we did a little activity just to get a baseline. We asked, "Now, what do you think the instructional priorities are for your department?" And there were answers all over the board, from "I don't really know" to, you know, "This is what we think it is." And there's no wrong or right answer. We're starting from scratch with EES, and part of this process is so we have that consistency amongst departments. So it was good information to have. Visible Learning 101. So with John Hattie's work that we're doing district-wide, we've found that the highest impact influence is that collective teacher efficacy. So when all of those magic things happen and teachers are all on the same page, the effect size is 1.57 years' growth. So that's the ultimate goal. The handout I gave you has impact sizes for different areas, and that's something you can reference later. It's pretty eye-opening to see, you know, some things we think that make a big impact and some things that we don't believe would make a big impact are pretty eye-opening. So it's color-coded, and you can see, you know, certain areas for students. It goes into some pretty, pretty good detail. Let's see. But the teacher collective efficacy is the main area of growth, and that's something we're trying to do across the board at CHS, which is getting everybody on the same page. There you go. Mr. Heinemann spoke about his impact, and as he spoke, I thought, "This is what we're talking about at CHS." So it is important, and it's something, you know, we don't know what our impact is until we do, and it could be years. We asked teachers at the high school what they thought their impact of teaching at the high school was, and then we gathered those, and it was, you know, interesting to see and really eye-opening to see how many people were on the same page about what they feel their impact is at the high school. I picked a couple to share, just picked about of the place I'm collecting them, because we're referencing those back in our staff meetings just once we get a little down this time of year. It's like, "You are making an impact." And teachers are saying, you know, their impact is for kids to feel safe and want to learn. They think their impact is relationships with kids, creating a safe space where students can grow socially and emotionally and intellectually, creating a sense of responsibility, excitement in learning, and encouraging academic honesty. And my favorite one, keeping it real.
Keeping it real.
Keeping it real. Next area that we're focusing on are the 10 Mind Frames for Visible Learning. This is also John Hattie's work. In our October PD, we, as a staff, we looked at these, and we're going to get more into detail throughout the next year or so with each of these different areas and what they mean and how we can achieve them. I had teachers rate themselves on what they felt they were good at already and what they wanted to know more about. Overall, number five is what we want to know more about, which was striving for challenge and not merely doing our best. So that tells me we're hungry to learn and go through this process. And then the areas we felt that we were pretty good at already were tied between three and four. So collaboration and believing that we're a change agent and all students can improve. Assessment capable learners. This is our ultimate goal for students. This is what we want to see and instill in our students throughout this process. So we want to maximize our impact, zero in on our strategies, and implement our instructional priorities with fidelity. And by doing all of that, we're going to achieve these assessment capable learners. So this isn't something that happens overnight. This is the process with EES through our professional development. Our action plan for CHS and the timeline, so throughout the second semester and currently, our leadership team and our admin team, which are two separate teams of people, teacher leaders were chosen to go through this process with us, and we're doing some professional development and then carrying that over to staff. And so these are the areas based off of our work with EES that we felt would be most sufficient for the high school staff to focus on. And then, okay, what are we actually really doing? Because that was a lot of language that I threw out at you. Our implementation team and the admin are attending workshops. We'll continue our PD throughout, you know, what we're seeing with EES through videos that they're sharing with us. And then ultimately, our goal is to improve instruction and student achievement through this process. So that's the end goal. Okay? And then this slide is just our vision, our district vision, and how we're going to achieve that student achievement. And these are the district goals at the bottom. I know you've seen this before. This is just how it ties together with what we've done with Marzano's work. Does anyone have any questions? Heinemann was a hard act to follow. He was more interesting than me.
He was more interesting.
How often are... How does EES work? Like, are they coming into the building? Are they collaborating just through online portals? What's that?
So over the summer, the admin teams and the implementation team, which were teachers that were chosen from each school, met for a full-day workshop with EES. They came in person. And then after that, we got the foundations workshop in person that day. They came on a separate occasion and met with the high school principals altogether. We talked about, you know, progress we've made, we've talked about different data that we shared with them, our school improvement plan, our goals, all of those things we brought to the table. And then we just had conversation about, you know, what we've seen through evaluations, through walkthroughs, how many new teachers we have, and came up with a plan on some of the models that they have. So the clear and high expectations, the routines, procedures. And they kind of piecemealed what they felt we would need based on the data that we shared with them. So at that point, every month, the administrative team meets virtually with them, and that's the elementary principals and middle school as well. We talk about, "We're kind of a month ahead in our training, so we can roll it out to staff the next month." And then the implementation team, which are the teachers, they meet a separate time virtually. And so the goal is for the teachers to be the leaders in the building. That's what we want to see. So providing them with the PD to carry on to their peers and then just us to support. So right now...
So that's those teacher leaders that you've selected that do that piece?
Yes.
And then do they... When is their opportunity to share that knowledge with their peers?
So it rolls out pretty slowly. So when we come back to the January PD, there are some videos that we watch, and then the goal is to get into classrooms and start doing what we used to call pineapple-ings. Anybody remember that term years and years ago, where teachers would go into classrooms and see what other teachers are doing? It's very similar to that, but there's a more thorough feedback form that focuses on the priorities that we're talking about. So right now, it's the clear and high expectations and routines. So at that point, when we send the teachers into rooms or give them opportunities to see other rooms, we're specifically looking for that consistency in those pieces.
And is it like strategy... Like, what I'm trying to get at is, you know, I'm sure, and we've all heard it, anybody who's been on the board, there's always new programs coming in.
Definitely not a new program. It's tying all the great things everybody's doing independently in their classrooms together, so it's consistent.
It kind of builds on that whole process of that guaranteed and viable curriculum. If you're going to have a guaranteed and viable curriculum and you give that to teachers, then you have to give them the tools to deliver that.
Right.
Because you can't just hand them this curriculum map and expect students to be able to understand that. So what it does is it takes the focus on those teachers that are master teachers that understand the strategies which make kids successful, and they become like the model classroom and the model teachers, and then they teach their peers. None of these strategies are new. I'm sure Mark was using them, I'm sure Ann was using them, I've used them when I was in the classroom. But sometimes, and especially in the last 10 years with the influx of technology and all of these sensory things, we've gotten away from direct instruction, and that's... The teacher is the most valuable person in that classroom, and we got to get back to that and helping kids understand how to use those basic strategies to be successful in each of their content areas. And some of our new teachers don't have the educational background that teacher programs are providing them, because they're coming to us from other fields. And so this also helps them become more successful, because a lot of times, they get no support for these transitions to teaching programs, and they're expected to be successful. So like today, we had a nine o'clock to 10 o'clock with admin. So EES, it's Jacinda Smith and Jennifer French, they meet with admin individually, they talk, they front-load what they're going to talk to with the teachers, so the admin is always ahead of the admin team. And then they meet again with admin and their team leaders, and then the teachers learn it, and then we roll it out. The teachers roll it out to the staff. And so it's a collective kind of strategy of moving forward. But it's nothing new. It's just focusing on the priorities and getting rid of some of the fluff that has a tendency to decrease student achievement instead of increase. And obviously, you can see by this page, there are a lot of things that do work, and there are a lot of things over the years. This is testament of all the things over the years that have been introduced to teachers, and some of them are effective and some of them are. And so that's what, as educators, that's that whole professional piece. You know, when you have a master teacher, they can look at a curriculum, a lesson, and they can determine what their kids need and what their kids don't need. But you have to teach them that ability to do that, and that's what this is all about, is empowering them to have a professional knowledge base to know, "These are the strategies I need to use. These are the strategies that are going to be most effective with my kids, and this is what we're going to..." And this is how I do it. Sometimes I just need to see it.
Yeah. It's like, and it requires a lot of patience for the process, because results don't come around. I mean, hearing this, it's very... It's timed, you know, like one team hears it first, then they present it the next month, and it takes a while.
Well, it is such a continuum. If you can't reach a kid, you can't teach a kid. So you have to figure out that piece first. And if, depending upon the age group that you're dealing with, high school kids and middle school kids are very different, and the expectations have to be different. And I think sometimes teachers manage with success and failure. There's never really a failure, it's just, "We got to fix something here." You know, it's well-intentioned, but sometimes it just doesn't work. And sometimes it works in your first grade class, but it's not necessarily going to work in your third, because you've got a different, you've got a different component there. The collaborative piece of this, it looks really, really good.
Yes. And it really has tied together, sorry, it didn't matter. It's really tied together the last five years, when Scott and I first started, we were all about Marzano. And then, but you had to build the pieces, you had to build that curriculum map, those CFAs. Then you had to build the relationships and the culture, and then you have to do the restorative practices. And now, we've kind of meshing it all together. This is kind of like the glue. But if it's going to be effective, you always hear teachers say, "I don't want some big $5,000 PD person come in and talk to me. My teachers next to me are effective teachers."
We've all listened to those.
Right. We're utilizing our own master teachers and helping them share that. And a lot of times, those teachers are the ones that don't always necessarily like to open their doors, because they don't view themselves as master teachers always. And so we're empowering them to become instructional leaders as well. Sorry for interrupting.
You don't know the impact that you've had sometimes to way down the road.
Absolutely.
I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kellie.
I think one of the key pieces, what she talked about, Kim, is teachers teaching teachers. We don't need to bring in a bunch of people, and we have some great teachers who know the craft. So I love that part of it throughout our district, where teachers are bringing it back to teachers and using our resources, because we have some wonderful teachers here who are master teachers. So I appreciate the work and the leadership going in with this, with our teachers and our administrative team.
Yeah, this is good information. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to seeking a motion to approve the agenda submitted and amended.
Come on, give her the motion.
Thank you, Jeremy. A second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposing, sign, motion carries. Public comments on agenda items? Seeing none. We have a sleepy audience. Consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from the special board meeting of 11:07:23 and the regular business meeting of 11:14:23. Personnel report, retirements, resignations, leave of absence, et cetera. Approval of November 2023 claims, 66446 to 66732. Appointment of Darryl Drew to the Fayette County Year of Employment Commission. End of year business office procedures. And donations, a grant in the amount of $634.40 from PMMI U Skills to WCC to be used to purchase repair parts for a MIG welder and to purchase steel for the program. A donation of $5,571.02 from the Drug Coalition to Fayette County School Corporation Elementary Schools to be used towards supplies for Red Ribbon Week. And a donation of $1,000 from Gibraltar Design to FCSC to be used for student needs. And seeing that, I'd like to seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Hi, Simone.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ann, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposing, sign, motion carries. Onto action items. Personnel reports, Mr. Carricks.
You don't get to hear from me much tonight.
We heard from you last night.
More than enough. You're right. Personnel report. Recommending employment under certified staff for Paxton Drew as health career teacher at White River Career Center. Classified staff, Lori Faber as a bus aide, and Russell Willis as custodian at Fayette Central and the high school. Under extracurricular, recommend Jacob Bentley as assistant track coach at the middle school, Matthew Boatman as a track coach at the middle school, and Ashley Isaacs as a seventh-grade volleyball coach at the middle school.
Okay, thank you for that. I would like to seek a motion to approve the personnel report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ryan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposing, sign, motion carries. Onto the approval of the 2024 school board calendar, Mr. Collins.
Thank you. It's hard to believe, 2024, so this is weird. Nine for me back in year eight with this adventure as superintendent, starting in February. So it's hard to believe, isn't it? This calendar will follow board policy with our meetings taking place the second Tuesday of the month, and there's one executive session building to it with evaluation information. We typically will add a couple more as needs arise. So I am presenting this to you with meeting start time 6:30 for all of our regular meetings. And I also want to highlight the two conferences at the bottom. If anyone is interested, please let Cindy know about that. I communicated that previously, so we can get early for registration if there's some on it, so.
All right. Great. And the approval of the professional service agreement, Mr. Collins. Oh, I am so sorry. I just skipped over that.
Okay.
I'd like to seek a motion to approve the school board, 2024 school board calendar.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Jeremy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposing, sign, motion carries. And now onto the professional service agreement.
Thank you. And Michelle Cooper's been with us during my tenure as legal counsel, and she works with Lewis and Kappa's Attorneys at Law. And we've been very pleased with Michelle, and you all have met her in different capacities, and her retainer, this is one of the best bargains, I think, around when I look at a $500 monthly retainer, and she provides a lot of service to us that fits into that. So when I talk to other districts, our legal fees are very good compared to some. So the time track terms have not changed other than the date, and I would recommend that we continue this service for another year with Michelle.
Well, thank you for that. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the professional service agreement.
Hi, Simone.
Thank you. Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposing, sign, motion carries. Okay, persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, or comments may address the board at this time. Comments, which involve personnel or students, must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we will move on to superintendent's discussion group report. I will mention, under that category, I attended the ISBA Law Seminar this past Friday. Michelle Cooper was one of the speakers. She gave a great talk on social media and what is something that schools have to respond to and what are things schools don't have to respond to. There was also another discussion on things that happen outside of school and why or when a school needs to act if a student is participating in something that they shouldn't or is doing something that they shouldn't. It was really a great workshop. I encourage people to go if they ever have an interest. Michelle garnered the most discussion and conversation, and the person that followed her unfortunately was not nearly as good, and people were like snoozing. So Michelle did a great job, just say that.
It was a hot topic.
It is. It is. There were lots of examples people gave, so it's fascinating.
It's all of the national news, too.
Yes. Principal directors' reports. Nobody?
Oh, she can go first. It's kind of weird, huh? The Spartan Learning Center, we've had a great semester, in part to my amazing staff, collaborating with some community groups. We have Purdue Extension come in and do nutrition classes again this year. And then I'm excited, we're going to be partnering with Eastern Indiana Works next semester, doing some career workshops for some of our upperclassmen. So I think it's going to be very useful, different topics each week, and those students are going to get that information that they can take with them after they graduate high school. Thank you to those of you who came to our open house. It was a success in November. Had a lot of parents come in, always wished we could have more. So we just continue to goal-set with our students, giving our students ownership, looking at their transcripts, trying to help them to understand how credits work and, you know, make those goals towards graduation. So overall, just thank you for your support. We have our middle school program, which was new this year, and that is, you know, Mr. Stanwyze's doing a great job with that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a couple things.
Hi.
I would say, so I'm not as important. Scott said something about being back here nine years. This is hard, believe it's my 10th. I hit the only people on the board when I got here, maybe Chris and Lori. Does that sound right? Again, for you.
I was just coming on.
Yeah, so a lot of change. The administration team changed a lot when I sat there. I kind of looked like a grandpa with a gray facial layer, but a lot of people are younger and newer than me. So just want to give a lot of thanks to Terry and his help with our Y2K drill we had with the power outage.
Y2K.
That is honestly what Y2K was supposed to be.
We're just 23 years late.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I can only imagine what it would have been on a world scale. So Terry did a great job getting some communication out that we weren't able to do at the time. Darryl, I know he's not here tonight, but he was great getting his guys over there and finding the source of our issues. Communication was fantastic at high school, you know, a great vessel for us to relocate to. But everybody did a really good job, and we have an open house coming up here in February. We'll get those invitations out to all of you coming up. And we have NTHS, I believe, about the middle part of March. So we're going to be finishing up our last 10th grade visit tomorrow. Franklin County will be visiting, so we'll be done with that. So we're kind of checking off the checkboxes. So just thanks for all your support, you know, all that you've done for us, so.
I love that open house. I went last year. I love that the students show the incoming or the visiting young people, and it was packed last.
This year, we did it with, and unfortunately, I was out of work that day, but I left with a kidney stone, so I didn't make it to our elementary night we had with some middle school kids. We had a lot of kids. We had 100 and some kids come through that were sixth, seventh, and eighth graders from around our region. And we had kids, our kids come in, our current students come in and actually show them some hands-on things, and it was great, you know, trying to let these parents start looking at their futures before... If you wait until your freshman year to start scheduling your future, you're late in today's day and age with pathways and the way that the counseling has to work out. So that's something we're really trying to push because, I will say this, not because I work there, hands-on skills are the way of the future in this world. Whether we all want to admit it or not, being sitting here college-educated, it's true. And it's starting to become something that's very prevalent, so we have to embrace it and try to build on that.
Thank you, Steve.
I want to commend, too, seven minutes they were evacuated from all the buildings at WCC, and then they were relocated to the fieldhouse. But, and I was at superintendent's meeting that day, so I'm on the phone trying to get through to these guys, but I commend our whole team, from our maintenance to our teachers and our administrative team, and, you know, everyone was safe.
And we deleted their voicemail, correct?
I won't go into that. I should have kept it. And then also, you know, one of the things I said on the board, and we're the biggest school, and, you know, we're the LEA, so we're the local education agency, so, you know, I evaluate, Steve, and we oversee that program and manage those funds through here. But, you know, one thing they do is they're constantly looking at the market, what's responsive. So they're looking at another program now to expand where they've had a lot of interest with exercise science. So that's, you know, and I don't want to spill your thunder, but you're going to be sharing this later, but, you know, that's a different type of kid that we'll attract, too. You said when you looked at the exercise science, so you've had a really good response to that, and I'm excited about the process.
Just got to get the kids signed up. It's hard when you don't have something visual for kids to come visit. You know, we went through the same thing with criminal justice, and everybody can relate to being an officer or an EMT or something public like that, because they've grown up around that, and that's part of society, where a lot of kids don't know what an exercise science program will be. It's athletic training, physical training, occupational therapist, all of those types of things, and we're trying to encompass that and trying to hit some different kids. You know, we had a lot of kids in the hands-on aspect, and that's something that's more on the hands-on slash academic aspect, so that's something we're adding.
Finding the right teacher for that is crucial, too, by the right personnel.
Well, we're going to have to find a bunch of them in the next six months, so.
I did try to get into ladder safety as a course that I would teach, but they won't do that.
Imagine why.
I could also use that as a why.
Give me one of your deals.
You have anything?
I was just going to say, shout out to our school counselors and social workers. I know student need is pretty high this time of year with the holidays around the corner, so they're in the trenches, as well as teachers and administrators, just helping kids. Thanks to them.
Much needed. Okay, on to director of operations.
I'm going to make it real short. You've got the fund report in front of you. We continue pretty much status quo as we go along. We have, if you looked at the very, very bottom total compared to last year, our total fund balance is lower. Again, as we've talked, that is intentional. We need to spend into some of that, but it's definitely going to get tighter. We've got one year left of ESAR, almost to the day, and I just remember when ESAR started three years ago, it was like, holy cow, we'll never be able to figure out how to spend this money, and now it's like, holy cow, we're never going to figure out how to go back to the board. So, continue on there.
And you'll share that with us when you figure that whole plan out, right?
Yeah, he's working on that later.
We're discussing, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, assistant headman.
I just want to give a shout out to Kelly Duncan and her team at SLC. This is a tough time for kids in poverty, and we sometimes forget that. And they, the building looks like the elves have been busy.
It's gorgeous.
It's gorgeous, and I think sometimes we forget the things that we do every day are not natural for them. And she shared a story with me about a little boy who was so excited because they don't put a tree up at home. So kudos to you and your staff for touching those kids and making it special. That means a lot.
Superintendent's report.
I always have something to grab, but I want to, again, congratulate Kaylee, and she was one of several kids who were finalists, and they all represent our school district so well. I want to speak on, you have the families and friends of two longtime teachers who passed Virginia Vaughn and then Wilma Stute, both beloved teachers. Kim was talking about Virginia today.
Did my student teaching with Virginia.
She was her student teaching, you know, she did her student teaching with her. Cindy was sharing some things about Virginia, too, because she worked with her at Fayette Central. But both ladies, dedicated professionals who impacted, when Mike talked about impacting kids, both ladies made, you know, such huge difference in their lives that they probably didn't even realize. So just thoughts and prayers for those friends and family members during this time. And then I want to commend our fine arts program. We had a bit of a tough challenge at the high school when we did our first elementary program, that there wasn't any room for people to sit. And you think about the size of that alctorium, it's a good problem to have, but it's a stressful problem to have, too. So we don't have a bigger auditorium in Fayette County, so we're going to rework, you know, some things to make sure that we can accommodate everyone. So parents are coming back, and that's really good. You know, it's a good problem to have. So I just want to commend the work of our teachers and the staff and the kids for their work in those areas.
Yeah, I was there that night, and I ended up leaving because there was no seat, and people were spilling, well, they were in the hallways, and people said, I'm just going to wait till my kid comes up, and then I'm going to step in the doorway, and then I'll step out. And I could see a couple of men from the fire department. They were actually, or it said, "Cunt, we're going to fire burn up." I mean, are we violating fire code? But actually, I mean, I don't know, people seem to understand, okay, yeah, this is probably...
Was it one of the Christmas programs?
It was. It was the Christmas program for all the elementary.
No, it was three.
Oh, I was going to say, there's one coming up Thursday.
Thursday night.
It was just three.
It was just three. I thought it was...
No, no.
So parents are coming back, and that's a positive.
Yeah.
But we just weren't quite prepared for that.
Yeah, the top and the main floor, I mean, not even standing room. They were in the hallway. But I was so excited when I pulled up, and I thought, wow, look at all these people.
Yeah, there was only three elementaries.
I texted Scott on my way out. It's like, oh my God.
We just have two at this 1:30, so we should be okay.
Okay, should be okay.
Come early.